Okay, go on. All right, good evening. Welcome to the Newmarket Planning Board Meeting on January twenty-third. Please join me in a place of allegiance.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. I am the President of the United States of America. In the United Republic, we would say that we are one nation under God, and we are the Lord of the earth, and we are the Lord of the heavens.
Thank you. Janice Rolster is not here tonight, so Mikel will be acting as a member tonight. First on the agenda is public comments. Any public comments? Here are none. I'm going to close the public comment section. Next is review and approval of the minutes of December twelve. Is there a motion?
I have a motion to approve the minutes of December twelve.
Is there a second?
Just a second, I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead, Belle.
On page seven, line forty, I think we need to clear up the motion. I'd like to clear that up. The motion made exactly like the one in seventy-one, forty, the whole site is under change, or residential needs to be changed, from a major site to a minor site.
Right.
You should make it four more.
From major to minor.
It doesn't have anything to do with major versus minor. That would make all many different changes. Major versus minor. We want any comments, but we did the exact thing, the other thing, maybe just some of these factors.
Any other comments? None, all those favors say aye. Aye, all of the votes. Most effective. All right, regular business. Unless there's an objection from the board members, we're going to take Tyra from the call first, and we're trying to reconfigure the update, give an update on where we are, update the stormwater regs. Tyra, welcome.
Appreciate you moving me up on the agenda. I know you guys have a few things on there, so I'll keep my comments fairly brief. This is more or less just to give you an update on where we are with the update. So I was here, I think, in July, but just as a refresher, Newmarket last updated their stormwater regs in two thousand and ten, and that was prior to the Southeast Watershed Alliance model regulations that were put together in two thousand and twelve. Since then, they've been working on updating that model, last year and into this year. There's new precipitation rates. They updated their management strategies for redevelopment, and they had some changes in impervious coverage. So those were the big-ticket items that they addressed in that update. So where we got started, in two thousand and sixteen, we were given the opportunity to apply for a project to special merit grant. Those grants are only available to coastal zone management areas. So we, along with Rockingham Planning Commission, University of New Hampshire, Great Bay Reserve, we all sent in an application together. There were a number of different pieces to that. It was called the Setting Sale Project. And as part of that application, we were able to have some funding that we could set aside for technical assistance for our five coastal communities. So we did a master plan in Chapter four Dover. We did a grant application for Rollinsford. We did an emergency management workshop for Madberry. Durham, we're working on a floodplain ordinance, and Newmarket decided that they wanted to look at their stormwater regs. So we guaranteed that it was going to be at least six thousand dollars worth of technical assistance, but because of the way that the money shifted around, a few communities didn't need that much, so Newmarket actually ended up with eight thousand, which was good for us, because we met quite a few times to do it. So. Well, I don't need that. Just going to go through it.
Do you want me to go up and advance it first?
Yeah, it's not even advancing here.
Yeah, just proceed.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. So basically, our project partners was myself, SRPC. We had the Newmarket Planning Department, and we also had UNH Stormwater Center. Those were the three pieces. So we put together a subcommittee. The membership of that subcommittee, there was a Conservation Commission member, which was Patrick Reynolds, a town council member, Gretchen Cast, Case? Diane Hardy, the town planner, Ben Drier, who is the staff member for Underwood Engineers, and Peter Nelson, representing the planning board. So that was the committee that's been working on this. We met six times. We started in August of last year, and we held our last meeting in December. At each one of those meetings, we worked our way through every component of the model ordinance, decided what was going to stay, what needed to be tailored, what was going to get taken out, and what was going to carry over from your existing regulations and carry that over to the new update. So to give you an update of where we are, we've organized all of the recommendations. All the revisions are complete. It's been reviewed by the subcommittee. It's also been reviewed by the town attorney. His comments have also been incorporated into the final draft as it stands now. Right now, the town is considering to offer the opportunity for those draft regulations to be peer-reviewed by either a developer or an outside engineer, or a combination of both. I don't know, Diane, if you want to give an update on that, if that's moving forward, or?
We would like to have somebody who uses this proposal and working on the local authority to give that peer review and have the very advocates, because he gave us a sense of whether or not what we're doing needs to be done. And I have a couple of names in mind, people that we've worked with and have successfully done projects with us, and I was going to offer communication to all the commissioners. Jack Clifford and Eric Longbaum, people very experienced, hopefully, who've done a lot of work. I know Jack is on the team, or Elliot Payne, and he's a very interesting term on issues. So we could ask them if they would mind a little peer review force and get us some comments, and maybe we can coordinate their community.
Yeah, which, and the RPC, the Planning Commission is on board with that as well, to get an outside developer's perspective, especially because this is going to be the first community to adopt the new model. Any feedback we get, we can pass that along to the authors of the model to make sure that they think about that moving forward. So we're going to have an opportunity on February thirteenth to really dive into the changes. At that meeting, I think we're going to have a workshop where Jamie Hoo will be here from the Stormwater Center to, he was one of the primary authors of the new update and the original two thousand and ten regulations. He'll be here to sort of go over in more detail why they made certain changes, and you can ask questions. And then I'll follow that up with a more detailed presentation on, you know, the substantial changes that we made. Just to highlight a few of them. We added additional definitions that were carried over from, that were in the model that weren't in your existing regs. We changed some of the minimum thresholds for site plan review. So to give you an example, your two thousand and ten regulations, it was, the projects that were getting captured under that were projects that disturbed any more than twenty thousand square feet. What we're recommending is that comes down to five thousand square feet, and, or more than twenty-five hundred square feet within a hundred feet of a surface water. So that is a substantial change going from twenty thousand to five thousand. One of the primary reasons behind that, and I'm sure Jamie will talk about that, what they did in analysis in Durham where they looked at all new construction for, I think, seven years, and they, what they looked at is trigger points, or the trigger threshold. So that five thousand square feet captured about eighty percent of projects. And I think the twenty thousand square feet was something like fifty or sixty percent of projects. So the more projects you are getting under this review, the better your stormwater management is going to be. So that was why they chose that five thousand threshold. There's other substantial changes. There's all-new stormwater management for redevelopment. That was one of the pieces in your existing, that there wasn't a whole lot there. It also allows for mitigation for redevelopment, which is new. So if it, you know, the maximum extent possible in terms of capturing something on-site, if it's just not feasible, this options for mitigation allows for off-site mitigation. So it allows for a developer to get creative in moving their stormwater around. So if the site is difficult, there are some options, also connecting to the municipal system. So there's a few different things in there to allow for some flexibility. Submission requirements, general performance criteria, there's a spill prevention and control and response plan, that's only for site plan only. And then the other big ones are looking at your site inspections, your maintenance and reporting responsibilities. So that's going to be a requirement anyway, but now this is sort of moving it onto the developer to get you that information, so you're keeping track of that, all of the different maintenance and inspection schedules. So the next steps, I mentioned that the workshop is going to be on February thirteenth. That's going to be with the Stormwater Center and the Planning Commission. After that, we'll hold a public hearing and then final adoption. So the public hearing, we won't do that until we receive feedback from the developers and decide what's going to be incorporated into that, but at this point, the regulations are as final as they're going to be until we get comments back from the developers. So we're hoping that we'll get that feedback sometime in February, and then move on to the public hearing process and then final adoption. Our grant is over March thirty-first. That doesn't necessarily mean that you, as a planning board, have to adopt it by that time. What we wrote into the grant was that a final draft would be in front of you at that point. But we're hoping that, you know, by the end of March, you'll be almost ready to adopt it. But there's no requirement from the grant, so there's no, there's nothing like that. And that's it. Any questions?
Clarification. So February thirteenth, you will be on the planning board agenda for the workshop next. And when will we have the proposed regulations?
They were sent out on Friday, did you have them? Something wrong with our computer system, because I sent a copy to Eric and Dick's copy. Peter got his. We found, we made it and picked up some stuff. I don't understand what's going on.
I think we have a fairly accurate schedule.
I think it should all go. Oh, yeah, I saw you got the email, but other people didn't.
So let's do this. Let's have Sue print her copies, and then we'll make arrangements whenever you're available. Come pick them up, make sure you have them in plenty of minutes. That's one good to, to come into that, the January thirteenth. Not prepared to ask questions and whatnot, so.
So you send them out on, actually, probably the arrangements, the comments that I sent to me, so I can send them out.
Yep.
I forgot, I had to ask you to print them out. The board workshop will be the thirteenth, and the first potential public hearing will be in March. Do you approve this? So that would be the first for us, right?
Yeah, and I would say, you know, to come prepared to that January thirteenth for questions for Jamie, or myself.
February thirteenth.
February thirteenth, sorry. As he's the, you know, one of the primary authors, he's going to know a lot about why they chose to use certain numbers, so if you have certain questions about why things are there, we will definitely answer that.
And Diane, you're going to have peer review on it before the February thirteenth?
I don't know if we'll be able to get the peer review comments by the thirteenth. Hopefully, we can.
So we might have to wait to March, actually, April for a public hearing, because?
Let's see if we can, yeah. I mean, we're asking them to do us a favor.
Oh, yeah.
We could have a public hearing.
I think that would be important to hear from, as you're setting up, I agree a hundred percent with the engineering side, but also the developer's side, because they're going to see this in two different lights. The engineer is really going to see it from the engineer perspective. The developer's going to be looking at it from a cost perspective and impact.
Because if you have a public hearing, and then the developers get together and they dramatically change it, then we have to have another public hearing if it's changed so much, so.
Yeah, I mean, but let's face it, they can make, people can make recommendations. It's ultimately our decision, you know, so.
Well, I think before I would want to make a decision, I would want that input.
Absolutely.
Yeah. We'll do our best to get some comments by the thirteenth. I'm just saying it's a little bit of a short timeframe for people, so.
Thank you very much, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle. Great. Good night. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. Before we start the next section, has everybody seen the memo from John Rattigan, the town's attorney, relative to the ADU and potential change, recommended change if we want to undertake that, as part of our regulations, part of the zoning? So I know, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith?
Jack Dion.
Oh, Jack Dion, I'm sorry, is here tonight for that. Just be patient for a little bit, if you would. What's everybody's take on, basically, John Rattigan shared the concerns that Val had with us trying to, you know, offer up that applicants could make restrictions on their property, didn't think that was very practical, probably not legal also. So that's one point. The other point is a recommended change to the zoning, which, as he says, "The planning board may waive impact fees where it finds that a proposed accessory dwelling unit will not increase the number of existing bedrooms in the property, and where it finds that one or more of the existing bedrooms on the property will be dedicated to the ADU use." So the first, the question I have is, is the, as a board, do we want to undertake trying to make this change, have a public hearing, make a change to the zoning and make a recommendation to the council to adopt that, or how do we want to approach this? Rosie, go ahead.
I'm not in favor of changing it and giving the waivers out. As Attorney Rattigan stated, over time, the number of such waivers could grow substantially, and with such growth, become the burden of a substantial number of. It sounded like it was from that microphone. We should probably turn that off.
I'll turn it off.
I mean, we just, we don't have the manpower or the personnel to carry that out, so I think it would just be a burden on the community. He was referring to deed restrictions, because that was what was discussed at, discussed, excuse me, at the last meeting, that he, his comment was pertaining to that approach, having deed restrictions that the town would then have to administer. So he suggested this language so that it gives the planning board another option for granting waivers in situations where there isn't an increase in the number of bedrooms as a result of the accessory apartment. That's what he was referring to, and he was talking about the burden of administrative
I thought finally preventing a waiver based on age would cause upon the town the ADU dwellings.
We're not talking about age.
Two separate issues.
We're not talking about any age restrictions at this point.
Well, his recommendation is we do not allow any waivers based on age restriction, because we can't enforce it. It's not technically legal, so we don't want to go down that way. But what he suggested was there's another avenue, if the planning board so chooses, that an opportunity to grant a waiver may be a situation where, say they're taking a three-bedroom house and making it a two-bedroom house with a one-bedroom ADU, you're not adding any bedrooms. That's a different situation. That's what drives the impact on schools, on water and sewer systems. Additional bedrooms.
And this was his recommendation, that, this language.
That was an option.
Right, Val, go ahead.
So I think if we do go that route with the proposal to amend our current ordinance, I think that we should also be careful, because I'm in agreement with it, as long as the number of bedrooms are not being expanded, you're converting one bedroom to another. But I think we would want language in here that if you had a studio apartment, which wouldn't qualify as another bedroom, right, that somehow that doesn't exempt you, but a studio would also have to qualify as a bedroom.
Correct.
So that you're not taking a three-bedroom, and then, say, you just have a studio apartment over the garage, now in fact, you really have created this fourth bedroom.
So do we want to add a clarifying statement to that effect?
I just think to some point, it should be.
It'd be a definition of what is considered a bedroom.
Right. Because a studio's not considered having a bedroom, right? Your studio's one bedroom, it's two bedrooms.
People sleep in them.
No, but under a definition, it's not considered having a bedroom. It's a separate definition.
So we would have to have a workshop on this thing. Unless somebody can.
I don't think you need a workshop.
Unless somebody wants to suggest some language tonight.
Well, I think it would be nice to get a consensus of whether or not it's something the board would support, amending the ordinance. And then if there's enough votes for that, you know, what would be the language of the amendment?
Right, then we'll go through that. So just hold. Jane, Jane, what are your thoughts?
I think what I struggle with is, to your point, though, when you talk about a studio, and what is the definition of a bedroom? Right? I mean, Diane, I get it. Everyone kind of knows what it is, but a lot of people would sit there and say a little corner could be classified as a bedroom.
Well, we could put in language that a studio apartment for purposes of this section is considered one bedroom, period. Keep it simple.
Yeah, but I think, I think that's my point.
Yeah, but if you.
I think we have to be clear, though.
Right. No, I agree you need to make it clear. But I mean, a very direct statement to that effect, I think, does the trick personally.
And again, just trying to circumvent an applicant trying to come before us, where they really are increasing potentially the use, because they're, they want to maintain the number of bedrooms they have and add the additional ADU sleeping area.
Right.
Now, his letter, I just read that part of the thing, and he said the ADU doesn't apply. ADU according to accessory dwelling units.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think everyone's in agreement with John's letter.
He's saying that it would be a burden for the town.
This is for, just trying, age restricted, trying to come up with some method.
If you're creating a waiver to anybody, saying that, and this was my argument during the workshop that we had, when the state changed the RSA to be by right for all those that are zoned within single-family units. And I stated then that if, once we did this, we would not be able to give waivers to children, for the school, and you were all in agreement with me. And this, you know, we don't have the manpower to do this. This is going to be a burden.
We're not going to do that. We're not doing, he's saying we're not, he agrees that if we were to try to do something age-restricted, then somebody in the town would have to go out and inspect occasionally, make sure it is age-restricted. That's off the table. What he is saying is that that's untenable. You can't, he doesn't recommend we do that because it's unworkable and it's illegal.
Right.
All right, so, but what he is saying is that we may want to consider granting waivers in a situation where the number of bedrooms in the facility is not changing. In other words, if I have a three-bedroom house, and I make it a two-bedroom house with a one-bedroom ADU, you still have three bedrooms. In theory, there is no additional burden to the town at all. That, to me, is a reasonable interpretation, a reasonable decision to be made to grant a waiver in that situation. That's all he's, that's what he's saying.
If we are not legally able to restrict the age of occupants, okay, by us granting a waiver under the school portion, we are thereby expecting that they will not have any children in those units. Therefore, we are indeed restricting the age. And you can go about it any way you want, to say, well, if they're not increasing the bedroom, so now we've got to go inspect the property to make sure the fourth bedroom that's existing is the bedroom that's going to be used. No.
Well, the building inspector's going to inspect it anyways during the construction of this.
By granting the waiver, we are indeed saying you cannot have school-aged children.
No, we're not.
No, we're not. Yes, you are.
Because it's expected of the property owner that because we gave them the waiver, that they will not have school-aged children yet. That's not what we're saying.
Not with the proposal, that's.
We're just saying you can't, if you, if the number of bedrooms at the end of the day is the same as it was when it was a single-family house, then that requirement is legally defensible, in his view, after looking at the case law and the discussions back and forth. And I gave them all the minutes of the board, you know, from when we had the discussion back and forth.
The premise is that, from the legal perspective, as John is stating, the premise is that you're not expanding the, you're not expanding the physical use of the property. If it's a three-bedroom, it still remains a three-bedroom. It's a four-bedroom, it still remains a four-bedroom. So you're not, you're not expanding the existing use of the property.
Right, you're not exposing.
Is the premise of the ability to grant the waiver, if our ordinance allowed it. Right now, our ordinance does not allow it.
We're not exposing the town to, in any instance, any additional bedrooms.
So they want the ADU increased to the surface.
No new net bedrooms, I'm comfortable with.
Right. For waivers?
Yeah.
For waivers, and he said it.
You still don't have to give the waiver.
No, right.
Right, no.
You can, you don't have to give the waiver.
Right, right, you can consider it.
You still have the.
Right, you have the option to, and let's face it, the direction of the law is accessory dwelling units are coming, you know, we just went through that whole thing about how important that is, and it's now written into the law, so they're coming anyway. We're trying to find one example where we can have the ability to offer a waiver in cases where there are no new net bedrooms. Simple, and has nothing to do with age.
Well, I'm sure when the taxes go up next cycle to at least three dollars a thousand on all the homes in Newmarket, and we start waiving close to three thousand dollars on all these ADUs that are now legally able to be done, what?
It's not a guaranteed waiver.
Well, if you give a guaranteed waiver to one person, you're going to have to give it to the, you can't.
Each case is, each case is individual.
Yeah, but if each case is, has, say, I'm just using four bedrooms, and they're using the fourth bedroom, and it's not, you have to give it to everyone who does that. And I mean, with it being a right to have an ADU now. No, you're opening up a can of worms. I do not recommend it at all.
You know where Rosie stands. Jane?
I don't see why you can't do it.
Amy?
I don't see why you can't do it.
For this specific instance.
For this specific instance, it doesn't change.
Yeah, I would be in favor of amending this, as long as it wasn't an increase in, what I call density, right, bedrooms.
Mikel?
I just wanted to make sure when we're talking about impact fees, are we talking about school impact fee as well?
Yes.
We are.
There's four different impact fees, recreation, schools, water, etc.
Okay, so when we're talking about waiving impact fees, we are talking about it in this article, number seven, we're talking about these including the school impact fee.
That's correct.
It could be, whatever they ask for.
Okay, so I think in this case, it, you know, like, we have four different situations. And I think this generally says that it's a suggestion, it's not really, it's something that the board can do, but doesn't have to do, because it says may.
Correct.
So as a suggestion, I think that, you know, apart from other suggestions that are already here from two to six, I think it would be useful to have it there. I don't think it changes anything, because we still have to decide if we waive it or So, yeah, the suggestion, why not?
Peter?
Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, and I'm in favor of that. So do we, as a board, want to set up a, well, actually, I hadn't, already had suggested amendment to. amendment to, to this language, right? Do we want to try to work through that tonight and have a public hearing in March, or do we want to, between now and March, work with that, come back to the, come back to the February meeting with suggestions, recommendations, and be prepared to come up with a final? Why don't we do that?
I'd like to work on it, I don't want to rush it, just.
No, I agree, I agree. You want to do that, so we come to the February meeting prepared, any, if you have any suggested revisions. I would like to see everybody get them to the planning department, you know, a week before the meeting or something, so.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be good if they're all compiled, so everybody, they can be distributed, so everybody can think about, and we can discuss them semi-intelligently. And then, if we can come to a consensus on some language, then we could schedule a public hearing and see what the public input is. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, Diane, we'll put this on the agenda for?
For work session, for February 13th.
Work session.
And if everybody could get their comments a week before to me, and I'll compile them and get them out to everybody.
Yep.
That'd be great, thank you.
So, sir, I know you sat here, sat there patiently, and, you know, obviously, you heard the discussion. Based on our lawyer's input, we're not in a position at this point to grant waivers. So, obviously, it's up to you, but I would recommend just continuing your application until such time as we have more definitive language and updates, or if we're going to update, there'll be a more definitive answer where we can make a decision. But obviously, I leave that up to you. If, if you need us to take a vote or want us to take a vote, we certainly can, can take a vote. You would like us to vote tonight? Okay.
If you go to tonight, under what John said, it would have to be.
We can't.
We can't.
Right.
They approved one in October.
Right.
Fifty percent larger.
Yeah, excuse me, Steve, come up here, please. Yes.
Yeah, it was one approved in October, fifty percent larger than, than what I have.
Yes.
So.
We have new impact, new input from the town's attorney.
Correct.
So.
It was also said by him that you do have the authority to waive impact fees, correct?
Yes.
If we amend the ordinance.
Certain.
We would have to make an amendment to the ordinance first, which is what we, they plan on looking into between now and the next meeting, to make that amendment to the ordinance, so that we could then therefore give waivers.
But it hasn't been done in the past, correct?
We, we, I.
Right, well, because, because things weren't done in the past doesn't mean that's the way we're going to continue to do things in the future.
Oh, I get that, I get that.
You know, so, the playing field has changed, and we've gotten some, some input.
Since the state changed the law.
Since, rather, the state changed the law and.
The state changed the law in June.
Right. And, but, issues came up, and we got some advice from the attorney, which I think has certainly changed my opinion on granting waivers, and I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but.
I think I was supposed to have been told that there were waivers, not waivers, but impact fees to come, when I applied for the building permit. I didn't find out till October, when I was trying to get my occupancy permit.
Yeah, well, I can't speak to that as a planning board, that's a.
I would stop this procedure in July, when I applied for the permit.
Yeah, understood, understood. It's, it's not a great position for you to be in. Like I said, we can vote tonight, I'm not so sure you'll like the outcome if you force a vote tonight, but if you want us to vote tonight, we will vote.
I think he's better off getting a continuance.
Oh, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, but.
I would say a continuance until we continue.
Give us a chance to work through it, give you a chance of getting it.
Because if not, he would have to apply all over again, right, to come back.
Because it's a hearing.
Right.
For another hearing, so it would end up being more work.
So, we would continue, and then we wouldn't have to go back and re-notify all the abutters and start the process over again. So, I personally think it would be in your best interest to hold off until we can get something on the books, and then the board can vote.
Because under attorney's advice tonight, we'd have to vote no.
We'd have to vote no.
And you'd have to go through that whole thing all over again.
Can I, can I ask a question? So, I'm assuming you can't get your occupancy permit until the impact fees are paid, is that correct?
Right.
Right. Can an applicant in this process pay the impact fee and then appeal it, to rebate it?
What the applicant can do is request a temporary C of O until such time as the ordinance is acted upon, and then, at that point, a permanent could be issued with the understanding that any payments would be made that won't approve by the planning board. We've, we've done temporary C of Os, and we could do that for like a 90-day period, and it's pretty common. We did that with the Mill project, actually.
That actually makes sense.
Yep. Is that reasonable?
Is that, so, Diane, would you talk to Mike in the morning, so he's aware of what's going on? So, I think that's a, an appropriate approach.
Absolutely.
You know, that'll, that'll give you occupancy of it, and it'll give us the, the time to amend what we think we want to amend, and may help you in the future. No guarantees, but it'll give you an opportunity, so.
I mean, because otherwise, if we vote it down tonight, you're going to have to pay the fee to get the occupancy permit anyway.
Right.
So, this at least gives you the opportunity, if we continue the hearing, if we do vote and get approval to amend, then we can hear the case and determine whether or not we can waive it.
All right.
All right?
That would make sense.
I think it's just trying to be fair.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for your patience.
All right.
Thank you, Jack.
All right.
Thank you.
You're sort of caught up in the middle of a change in policy, and it's really not fair.
I'm just trying to think of something that's fair.
I think that is, I think that was a good, I think that's a good solution to that, absolutely.
Good. We have another change, I don't know if Sue, is it on the agenda? If you recall, last January, we had several subdivisions, well, we had several zoning and subdivision changes when we were doing the sign ordinance, and one of them was we changed the subdivision and site review regulations to reflect that applicants have to get the materials in 2021 days and advance the meeting instead of 15 days.
Yeah, we have that on the agenda.
Okay. I didn't have it on mine. So, I just wanted to say that Sue has, has worked up some language, and, and the planning board can go ahead and waive its own, not waive, amend its rules of procedure without a public hearing.
I thought we voted on this.
We voted on it, but we didn't change our rules of procedure.
I see.
We changed our site review and our subdivision.
Got you.
But this is another step in the process.
Okay. Okay, so, Diane, for the sake of expediency.
Yes.
The four items we had on our agenda are all going to be continued, right? We all have requests for continuances?
Yes.
So, I'm going to just read through them and.
Yes, do it as one, yeah.
We'll take them, we'll vote them as one.
Yep.
Um, so, the first one is Johnson, Smith, and Caitlin Smith, continuation of a request for a waiver of impact fees for an accessory apartment at 14 Woods Drive. Second item is Alex Capron and Kathleen West, continuation of a request for a waiver of school impact fees for an accessory apartment at 7 Moody Point Drive. Next is NIP Lot 6 LLC and Maplewood and Vaughn Holding Company LLC, continuation of a public hearing for an application for a lot line adjustment at 2 Forbes, 175 and 177 Exeter Road, tax map bar three, lot 67, and 9-6 in the B2 zone. And then, the last one is Maplewood and Vaughn Holding Company LLC, continuation of a public hearing for an application for site plan review at 177 Exeter Road, tax map bar three, lot 7 in the B2 zone. So, all of those hearings have requested continuances, so I entertain a motion.
I want a motion to continue the three just mentioned.
Four.
Four just mentioned applicants to act February 13th.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I just have it, motion passed unanimously, thank you. Next on the agenda is what Diane was just talking about, rules of procedure amendment to planning board rules of procedure, application submission section. This amendment is to change the application submission filing date to 21 days prior to meeting from 15 days to affect the recent changes to New Hampshire RSA 676, colon, for IB. So, we need a motion to make the amendment to our rules? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah, I just have it. Onto new and old business? Does anybody have any new business or old business they want to discuss? Hearing none, on to zoning committee? You going to give us a quick update on that, Diane?
Just that we had a meeting last evening with representatives of the town council and Mr. Levy of the Economic Development Committee, Valerie attended, as did Roseanne and myself, and Steve Fornier, and we talked about the status, if you will, of the zoning amendment that the committee started last January, and we had a public hearing on, and we had some feedback from, from the landowners regarding that. And of course, the planning board decided to focus on getting the first step completed before we moved on to the second area, and of course, the new steel mercy facility was approved in October. So, at that meeting, there were several questions raised about how this would be implemented, whether the zoning change would require extension of water and sewer utilities. We also talked about the status of payments and a little taxes, if it's a nonprofit organization, that had been raised as an issue in another community. And Steve Fornier is getting some legal advice from legal counsel on the viability of that approach and what we can and can't do. And the committee is to reconvene, and hopefully, we can move forward, this committee can move forward with scheduling a meeting with the landowners, because I think we decided that we'd like to make sure we understand where the landowners are coming from with respect, or what their interests are. So, we'll probably have a follow-up meeting in the next couple of weeks, we didn't really set a date, but that's my understanding, and then we can schedule our meeting with the landowners probably in February or March, and move it to the next step at that point. And hopefully, we'll have a legal.
Sounds good.
Diane, anything you want to add to that, is the emphasis on, we would really like to understand what the town council is looking for relative, you know, development in the community, and what they're, what the council is looking to see there, you know, where they want it, because they'll be in order to, if they want low-density development, that's one thing, but if they're looking for high-density development, it would need to be the commitment to bring it out, bringing out the sewer one.
Yeah, that's kind of, that's always been an issue out there with the sewer.
It just doesn't make sense to have a committee keep spinning its wheels without knowing what the, what the end goal is.
And to extend sewer out there, we have a preliminary cost estimate from Underwood Engineers to the tune of $1.8 to $2 million, so.
Diane.
It's an $1.8 to $2 million for sewer only. So, it's a major investment, so, going forward, we need to have some clarity as to what the town's position is, so that we are in a position to discuss and negotiate off-site improvements with any developer who might be interested in developing a land.
And because the, the thought of bringing sewer up there is because that area is over the aquifer. Because you reference Henry's study from many, many years ago, that they didn't even want excavation there, which, which has been there for several decades now, but to put all those septics out there over the aquifer is not a good idea.
Even if it's for low-density, single-family?
Yeah, even low-density, single-family, and lawns and fertilizers, and all those separate entities, to make sure that they're complying with what they should and should not be doing over an aquifer, but, you know, it's, you know, what vision does the council have? What do they look to do, and what could we put there that would be economically advantageous to the town?
Okay, thank you. Chairman's report?
That's you.
I've got nothing, other than it's a lousy day, drive careful.
Well, I guess you received the news that Cynthia Copeland is resigning, or retiring, as she had said, from Strack Regional Planning Commission, which will be a loss, she's been with the commission for 18 years, so she has a lot of institutional knowledge, and has worked very hard in the region for many years.
And for the record, has done a lot for Newmarket, she's resident here.
She lives in Newmarket.
She's one of the first residents of the, the mill was redeveloped.
Right, right.
She kind of put her money where, where the vision was.
Yeah. Just, I'm also on the zoning committee, so we're having the first search committee meeting this week.
Yeah, but no, she got her services much appreciated.
If you know anybody, send them away. I think there'll be a lot of applicants.
You think so?
Yeah. Um, committee reports, any committee reports?
I'm on conservation, but we're just, we're discussing just kiosks, and there's a few violations of some easement projects that we're, we're looking into and getting in touch with the landowners, but.
Was there any update on the Heron Point access issue? Didn't that run through the Conservation Commission?
They went to a meeting, and I'm not, I'm not sure what the result was, because I had missed, I went to this past meeting, and that wasn't discussed, but I was planning in Conservation that, that week, but if there was, I could bring that information in via the next meeting.
Planner's report?
Did you get some information back from Steve Fornier on stormwater regulations? I'm talking to Amy, I'm sorry.
On the stormwater regulations?
The MS4 program and the lawsuit.
He was going to a meeting, but he, he said he would, if there was another update, that he would let us know of what he can.
Where it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know if anyone has mentioned the passing of Jack Fitzgimmins?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. He's a former town counselor, a long time, did a lot for the town.
Yeah, he did, he did. Do you have anything, Diane?
No.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Don't forget to shut off your mic.
Thank you all.
Don't forget to shut off your mic.